Okay, it is now 7:10. It is now 7:10. We're going to go ahead and start the city council meeting for Tuesday, February 18th. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsome. Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
Do you have a more...
Thank you. Can, um, we have, the invocation will be given tonight by Reverend Roscoe Wright from New Hope Missionary Baptist Church here in Waukegan. Thank you so much this evening for being with us, and if you could come up to the microphone, thank you.
Thank you. Gracious God, we thank you for this privilege of prayer, and Lord, we thank you for allowing us to be in the land of the living one more day. Thank you, oh God, for your grace and your mercy. Thank you for your loving kindness and your tender, loving mercies. As we come here tonight, Lord, we ask you to bless Ann Taylor, the mayor of Waukegan and her constituency. Bless all of these people that are here tonight, patriots, members and body of our people, oh Lord, that represent Waukegan, and, Lord, all of their concerns. We ask you to come in and have your way, because we need you in troubling times. We need your answers. We need your will. We need your way. And then, God, the scripture says that with Christ, we can do all things through Christ that strengthens us. So strengthen us tonight. Strengthen her constituency. Strengthen the mayor herself, and allow these people to grieve out their differences in peace, with love, with joy, and with an honor. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you so much, Reverend Wright. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting, and thank you all for coming out on such a frigid night. We appreciate you coming, and we want to hear from our residents. Tonight, I'm going to start off with a couple of remarks from different departments. We'll start off with our building department. They'll give an update.
All right. Council, mayor, we want to thank you again. I know that I'm supposed to be non-biased, but I'm glad you started off with the best first. I want to start with that. But even though in the winter cold season, your building department is working very, very hard, and I would like to bring the team up so they can give you some examples.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to give you a summary of January 2025. Our revenue is at $690,000. That's between permits, license fees, administrative fines, property transfer records. We're $125,000 more than last year for license fees, and about $30,000 more in administrative fees from our hearings. We've been streamlining processes, and we plan on doing tutorials coming up in the next couple of months to provide more information to our citizens and our residents.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go over a few things with business licensing. First, citations have begun to be issued to licenses or to businesses that have not renewed their business license. As of today, 30 businesses have been cited, and another 200-plus are expired. Businesses were sent notice to renew in December, and a late notice was sent in January for those who had not made a payment, along with a 10% late fee. Along with paying for your license renewal, businesses are required to upload documents for the renewal. These documents include a certificate of insurance, a business layout, and a sales tax certificate from the state of Illinois, if applicable. Also, mobile food vendors are set to expire March 31st. Renewal for these licenses will be sent out soon. And finally, outdoor dining permits are also set to expire. There's no cost to renew these as long as the establishment keeps the same layout. If they do change the layout of the outdoor dining, they are required to reapply with a $25 application fee.
Good evening. I'd like to briefly explain how code inspectors are handling violations on private property. I know we're still in the middle of winter, but hopefully soon we're going to change over to spring. So for our curb appeal violations, like paint, damaged siding, and operable vehicles, we first send a notice to the homeowner with a detailed description of the violation and a timeline of when this is expected to be corrected, as well as our inspector's contact information. If you need more time, please feel free to reach out. You can call the inspector and request an extension. If you ignore the notices, we do send a second notice. The second notice is our final notice before we issue any citations. We are in the middle of winter, but we are still sending out notices for any violations we can see. Just giving everyone a little heads up. The timelines, obviously, are weather-dependent. If it's paint, we're not asking you guys to paint in the middle of winter. The deadline would be more towards the spring, when the weather would permit something like that. If you do ignore these notices without reaching out, we do issue citations, which come with fines, and then you would still have to correct that violation. For the upcoming spring season, a big issue we have is overgrown grass, garbage on the parkway, illegal construction. All of those, we tag the property with detailed tag explaining the violation and our ordinance, as well as a phone number for you to reach out at. Any grass violation, we do ask that it be corrected within seven days. If it's not corrected, we do issue a citation and have our contractors cut the property for you. That fee will be added to your citation fee. If we have repeat offenders, we are not going to leave notices. We're just going to start issuing citations. For any illegal construction, that incurs a double fee. Permit still has to be applied for within that week, or a citation is also issued. Vehicles parked on unapproved surfaces receive a parking ticket. If violations persist, citations will be issued to the property owners. To convert any area to an approved parking space, please apply for permits beforehand. Additionally, we are conducting rental inspections exclusively to verify compliance of life safety codes. We are not collaborating with any other agencies, and all of our code officers carry a City of Waukegan ID badge at all times. If you have any concerns, they can present that ID upon request. Finally, communication is key. If you receive any notice from us, please reach out to the number provided on the notice itself, or you can reach out to our department at 847-625-6868 for further assistance. Thank you.
And Mayor, Council, we are developing. We took in many of your suggestions on how we can improve the building department. We have a residential package and a business package going out, so you can easily navigate our processes. That was something that was important to you, so that's something that we implemented. In this downtime, in the winter, when things slow down just a little bit, that's what we wanted to do. You also asked for a tutorial, and we jumped on that right away. That was less than a week. And that's something that we're going to be working with Public Relations to do, so you can not only have just the website where you can go to and read things, but we're going to have videos placed on the website on how you can navigate our permit team, our business licenses, and other functions of the City of Waukegan, especially starting with the building department. And I think Julie wanted to go over some more stats.
Um, I can do the stats?
Yep.
I'd also like to make an announcement about, are we cutting and boarding services? We're going to be making a request for services and opening that back up coming up this spring. So if everyone could pay attention, sign up for the city's website for the, I believe it's the bidding process.
RFP, that was something that the other persons brought up also, about spreading the contractors out for our landscaping, so we can have more of our community members being able to hit, you know April's going to get here. We're going to have high grass and things like that, and we want to make sure that we can open it up to more vendors that can come in and work in our different communities.
Uh, hold on. When does that come out? Because I know I had, like, five or six calls last year about that.
Yep. Alderman Felix also. We're going to be putting that out soon. We just have to put the RFP out.
Okay.
We'll get it out here within 30 days.
Thank you.
Our, our building inspection team, they, they conducted 235 inspections in the month of January. That's up almost double from last January. Our property transfers have stayed about the same, so those are, those are steady. And like I said, we've gotten $30,000 more in administrative fees this month versus last year. And license fees was our biggest, biggest number at $470,000, just for January, which is up $125,000 from last year. And as Stephen said, we've been collecting all the emergency contact information and the business layouts, and trying to work with our business owners and to get all that information.
And that concludes our presentation, and we thank you for this time to share that with you.
Yeah, so question?
I don't have a question. Mine's more of a comment. I just want to thank Stephen Agroong and also Mr. Rodriguez also for all your help. Every time I, and Julie yourself also, every time I call, you guys are always willing to help, to assist. You guys do research. So being an Alderman, you know, you get a lot of, lot of situations, and our main goal is to resolve them all. And so therefore, I appreciate the fact that when I'm running around, have five things to do, that you guys are there, and you research, and you come back to me. And it's a work in progress, so I commend you for all the hard work you do, and salute to the residents of the 3rd Ward. Keep up the good work. I know it's kind of hard. It can be daunting at times, you know, but I commend Steve, also Miguel, and Julie for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Bolton?
Yes, could you please repeat that phone number again?
The phone number?
Eight what? Thank you.
And that rings on all of our phones.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Why, animal control is coming up. I, I do want to say, since coming in in '21, our building department had a lot of issues, mainly because they work with so many other departments, and the departments were not interacting with each other. We had actually over 400 voicemails that had not been answered as to businesses that had inquired about licensing and that kind of thing, but we never knew if they actually got a business or anything else. So we have worked and worked to increase that process, and are continuing to work, and making sure that, like, software that doesn't necessarily compatible with other departments, that we're making that work faster and working together. And the team that we have has been tremendous. So I want to say George Selis started that, and we're still continuing it. Nicole?
Good evening, everyone. Some quick stats for January. 30 cats in, 33 dogs. 12 cats went to rescue, 17 dogs went to rescue, and I am happy to report for, I can't remember the last time to say this, we had two cats go home back to their owners. That finally came. We did 146 calls. As we experience the colder weather, just a quick reminder, it's important to ensure all the animals have adequate protection from these elements. Make sure that they have the proper shelter, fresh water, and in any case, if you have any concerns, call us. Please, I want to let us citizens know that we are open seven days a week. So you do not have to wait till Monday. We are open on Saturday and Sunday. Our team is cleaning in the morning, but they will get back to you immediately. And in case it's an emergency, please always feel free to call dispatch. So please, don't hold on to your calls. Feel free. We're there seven days a week. Thank you. Absolutely.
I, I do know that the, that we do not do trapping, right, for feral cats, right?
We do not. Trapping for feral cats, if you trap them, they do have to be euthanized, because we do not have the tools to take care of feral cats.
So if, if, if there is an organization, stay and spray, am I saying that right? Spray?
Stay and spay.
Yeah, and, and that is also located. Now, they do, they do trapping, right?
Absolutely. So they will...
And so you wouldn't have to call them, make an appointment, and...
Yes. If they, if there's citizens that need help with feral cats that are around their residents, they can call us. We can absolutely set them up with stay and spay, where they will provide the traps for them at a low cost, and they will fix the cat and get it current on all shots, so it's not reproducing or spreading diseases.
I, I've been getting increase of coughs of feral cats. And then, one more thing. So the City of Waukegan, how, how, what, how many dogs are you allotted per home, and how many cats are you allotted per home?
So the ordinance states right now, you are allowed to only have three animals per household.
Cat combination?
Combination.
Or you can actually send a request to the chief of police. That's in our ordinance.
Okay. So three in total?
Yes. You just have to get approval if you want to exceed that number. That does not count as birds, though.
All right. Thank you, Nicole. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Mayor, I just want to say thank you. I got a call this weekend about the loose rottweiler, and you all showed up right away. Thank you so much.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Next, I'd like to have our police chief Navarro come up.
Hello, City Council and residents of Waukegan. This evening, this evening, I'm going to talk about the Uniform Crime Report, Part 1 Crimes, that we submit to the FBI annually. So our, I'm going to talk about 2023 and 2024. So our murders for 2023, we were at 10. For 2024, we're at 5. Obviously, a decrease of 50%, and all those murders were solved. On our rapes, for 2023, we had 19. For 2024, we had 14, so that gives us a decrease of 26% for 2024. Our robberies, for 2023, we're at 102. For 2024, we're at 47, which gives us a decrease of 54%. Our aggravated assaults and batteries, for 2023, we're at 168. For 2024, we're at 115, which gives us a 32% decrease in 2024. Our burglaries, in 2023, we're at 164. In 2024, we're at 91, with a decrease of 45% for 2024. Our thefts, we were at 1,148 for 2023. In 2024, we were at, we were at 844, which is a decrease of 27% for 2024. Now, our stolen motor vehicles, we were at 86 in 2023. In 2024, we're at 100, we were at 111, with an increase of 29%. Our arsons, in 2023, we were at 19. 2024, we're at 17, with a decrease of 11%. So those are our Uniform Crime Report stats that we do report on an annual basis to the FBI, and this same information I just spoke about can be found on the city's website. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
And again, I want to say thank you, Chief, for bringing out the information, because there's a lot of false information being given, and thank you for the update. Some general remarks. I first off want to thank our Public Works Department, our snowfighters who worked through the last winter storm last Wednesday, and have continued, even in the cold, to be out there working and fixing our roadways. So I just want to say thank you. Some of you may have seen them on CBS News and Channel 7 News last week. Alonso and Chris were both on, so they have become our local celebrities. But they, I'm telling you, Waukegan does their roads like no one else does them, so I want to, I think everybody up here can agree that you guys did a tremendous job. As I mentioned at the last city council meeting, February is officially Black History Month. There's lots of events going on. We've already had events. For those of you who went last night to see the movie Hush, which was about mental health awareness in the black community. Great show, if you haven't seen it. It'll be showing at different locations, but it was definitely something that was worth seeing. The Waukegan Public Library had things this last weekend. So did the Park District. Mark your calendars for Soul Food with Sylvia. This is hosted by the Waukegan Park District on Saturday, February 22nd, which is this Saturday, from 11:00 to 1:00 at the Jane Addams Center in Bowen Park. And you can come and learn how to make traditional soul food. And Sylvia England, a volunteer and founder with the executive director of the American, of the African-American Museum at England Manor, she will be leading the cooking demonstration to prepare wonderful traditional dish, and invite you to participate as well. The 40th Annual Salute to Gospel Concert is scheduled for Saturday, February 22nd at 6:30 at the Jesus Name as Apostle Church in downtown Waukegan, hosted by the College of Lake County. You can join them for an evening of uplifting music. You also have the Waukegan Symphony Orchestra will present Celebrating Black Artistry Concert on Sunday, February 23rd at 4:00 PM at the Orland Trap Auditorium at Waukegan High School. And for more information, you can view our list at waukeganil.gov to give you all of the events. Next, some of you may have heard that we are all done with litigation over the permanent casino. We've had two court cases lately that came to light, and I'm going to let our corporate counsel talk about those, but we are done. We are looking forward to our permanent casino.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I am pleased to say that a full five and a half years after the predecessor to this council went through a very rushed 120-day selection process. And it wasn't rushed because of the city. It was rushed because that's the time that Springfield gave to create an RFP, to vet different proposers, to go through a process, to get public input. I believe you had meetings at the Genesee Theater with hundreds of people there, and to then submit three competent bidders down to the IGB, and then to wait. Waited for almost two years before the IGB, the Illinois Gaming Board, made its decision. One of the most frustrating things about this was that immediately after the selection process, even actually before the selection process was even finished, the Forest Potawatomi Tribe, which had submitted a bid as Waukegan Potawatomi Casino LLC, filed suit in state court to, to try and block the progress of this. And they moved that to federal court and claimed federal constitutional claims arising from the bidding process, an open bidding process that was conducted. They filed suit in federal court, and then they tried to block the gaming board from issuing a license to Full House, which has been a great partner so far. The end result of that is that it has delayed the construction of the permanent casino by anywhere from two to four years, depending on what the forecast is right now for construction. At long last, and with help of some amazing outside litigation counsel, the city has prevailed both in the Illinois Supreme Court and then in federal court as well. Both courts found that in the end, the process that the city went through was fair, was transparent, and came up with, and came up with a result that was beneficial to the public. I'm very pleased to see this. As the mayor said, we do not expect this to proceed further. The state court case, which was decided by the Illinois Supreme Court, was really the only thing that was holding up Full House from proceeding with the construction. That was about a month ago. We found out about that. And then on Friday, the, the federal court case was, the dismissal of that was upheld, or the summary judgment, was upheld by the Seventh Circuit. Conceivably, the, the Potawatomi Tribe could file a few more motions, but we do not expect there to be significant steps further in that litigation. So we look forward to Full House coming in and submitting permits, and working towards a full facility at Fountain Square, which will benefit the city, its residents, and Lake County in general.
Thank you. For those of you who noticed, Saturday, our stickers went on sale online. We opened the window three today. That was our first day for purchase, and boy, were we crowded today. This is where you can get your discount from now until March 31st, so please take advantage of that and get your city stickers early. Additionally, to further enhance for customers and residents, we will announce which local currency exchanges will sell Waukegan City stickers this year at an upcoming city council meeting. But until then, please check out our website and social media pages to keep current on where you can get your stickers. As you know, temperatures yesterday and today are extremely frigid. Please take this opportunity to check on loved ones, particularly the elderly. Help them, maybe go to the grocery store, you know, help them get around. It is a difficult time. Also, make sure that your pets are not left outside. Let them go out, do their business, come back in. This is not the time to leave animals outside. Also, for those people who are looking for emergency services, United Way Lake County's 211 service is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They can be reached by calling 211, texting your zip code at 898-211, or visiting their website at 211lakecounty.org. I want to say congratulations to Waukegan's own Father Tim O'Malley from Most Blessed Trinity Catholic Church, who has been named auxiliary bishop for the Archdiocese of Chicago. I'm not sure that we've had anybody reach that level, so thank, again, congratulations to Father Tim O'Malley. The city has received numerous reports from our recycling waste collection company, or LRS, about people using their recycling garbage can as a regular garbage can. Again, we're going to ask that you look at, in most cases, on the top of the lid, there is a piece of paper that shows you what is recyclable and what is not. You can always go on the LRS website and look for what is recyclable, but please, come springtime, don't put your grass clippings in there. Recyclables are for just that, things that are recyclable. And you can look at the bottom of a plastic bottle, and you'll see the recyclable code, and then you know that that can go into recyclables. Again, if you have questions, you can contact LRS at 844-833-3577, or via email at service@lsrecycles.com. As always, go to our website for the city's calendar at waukeganil.gov, and our social media. We now have a whole new list that Mr. Cantu from our PR department has put out of weekly things going on in the city, and I think it's great that you guys get to see what's happening in different businesses and et cetera through the city. But don't miss out. Go to the news at social media, and sign up for our e-newsletter at enews@waukeganil.gov. And that's all the comments I have. To you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you so much. We do have no resolutions, and so we're going to go on to audience time. We have about 12 people, so we're going to go right ahead. I'm going to name the first five. Let me name the next, first six. Go to the left side. No, your right side. Go to the east side of the room, line up, be ready to go. The first one is Chuck Ruckstallus. Mr. Rayon Edwards, Satrie Stallworth, with Donald Stallworth, Antoinette Dietrich, Kevin O'Connor, and Brianna Stallworth. So Chuck Ruckstallus, Rayon Edwards, Satrie Stallworth, Donald Stallworth, Antoinette Dietrich... Antoinette Diedrich, Kevin O'Connor, Brianna Stalworth. Let me get the timer. You have three minutes, sir.
Can you hear me okay? Chuck Ruckstallis, Waukegan resident. I was going to just talk about Lake County concerts, but since this other item came up during committee, I would just make a comment about the roads and the snow plowing has been excellent for 45 years that I remember, even in the 80s with Bob Johnson and Public Works. And I would just say excellent job on the roads and the streets they've done. I did come here with my grandson. He's turning 18 in April, so he will be voting. And he is in the seventh ward, by the way, alderman. And so we just say that, let him get a better understanding of what's going on here. And I would just make a comment before the Lake County concert thing is, the Public Works or Public Safety and Health, we do need some environmental action other than styrofoam and straws. We have coal ash, we have ETO. We have a number of buildings, old buildings that are being torn down. You can say allegedly, but my take is there's asbestos in these old buildings and can't rely on the EPA to kind of do this. I got a text from Alderman Hayes three years ago that air and water quality was top priority. What happened? I think you need a committee to establish that and have a discussion about that. The last thing I had is the Lake County Concert Association. It's been around since 1952. I was wrong in the email I sent everybody. They formed the association around the Great Lakes in 1927. But it's a nonprofit live music event, five events. We would generally normally put them in Trap Auditorium, Orland Trap. We've had difficulties with scheduling that facility. So some of the events are at CLC now. The Genesee was too expensive. So any help you guys could get, I sent everybody a letter, and I've handed out two tickets for everybody on the dais here. They're flex tickets. It can be used for March 2nd at the Trap Auditorium or the April 6th concert at CLC. So hopefully, we'll see you there, and everybody will become a member in supporting this live institution in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruckstallis. I am a member. Mr. Rayon Edwards, you're next.
Good evening, council and committee. So no apology to the former mayor, Sam Cunningham, for the accusations that you, Alderman Turner, and this mayor made of saying he did something wrong with this casino process. The court said everything was fair. That's what the court said, right? According to y'all's statement and what you just said here. So let's talk about it. Mayor, you did not mention anything about Black History Month last meeting. I got up here and said that Black History Month is February 1st every year. We, the black community, should not have to wait to a second meeting in February for you to give a resolution as it relates to black history. And here it is, the second meeting, and it's still there. Then what's so disgusting to me as the leader of the city of Waukegan, you had a murder in your city. Did you forget? Do you remember? Do you know? Because you didn't put out no public statement. Rudell Kirkwood served on this council. You speak like your coworkers, so to speak. You guys work together. His son brought revenue to the city of Waukegan, and you said nothing, not even a statement from this city, giving y'all condolences to somebody who served this community. Guzman, you sitting up there like you a mob boss, bro. It's almost like you hijacking the city. When you say something, your city? Who told you this was your city? And I'm starting to wonder, what y'all letting him do? The rookie, sitting at this council telling y'all what to do, telling y'all how to run our city. This ain't his city. He don't run nothing. Chief, it's so good to see you, sir. We had a murder, sir. And a young lady named Veronica walked away from 4114 after breaking about seven laws. You owe this community an explanation, just like the young lady that died on Vista Hospital. There was a press conference, mayor. I didn't see you. I didn't see your chief of staff. I didn't see nobody representing the city of Waukegan, and that hospital resides in the city of Waukegan. I remember December 17th in 2023 when your chief of staff got the email of all the things that was going on in the hospital. I remember in February 2024, you stood at the Lake County F Department and lied to this whole community and said you had no knowledge of nothing. How do you have a chief of staff and you don't know nothing about your city? Girl, you tripping, and you capping, is what the young folks say. Now that it's election time, everybody is doing something. I've been to the Martin Luther King Celebration at First Corinthian Church several years, the last three, to be exact. You've been the mayor for almost four years. It was real funny to see you at this last celebration. Oh, I forgot, it's election time.
Thank you. Satrice Stalworth and Donald Stalworth together? Go right ahead, ma'am.
We ready. So, good evening to the city council and mayor. We're here tonight, the Stalworths, once again. The last time we was here, we was here in regards to our son, who we tragically lost, Donald Stalworth III, tragically hit and killed by a Waukegan ambulance. And we were here to get his name on the street where his blood was shed. The city accommodated. You were very honorable thing of you to do in honor of my son. But today, we stand here because after everything is over, we're approaching three years later. We got the street, we got the law, but the city, fire department, along with other cities as well, in Lake County, other counties, they're failing us. The law has passed Act 1251, Donald DJ Stalworth III. As you can see, I'm wearing the shirt. That law states that the ambulances now have reduced their speed from 40 to 25 going through intersections. Lights and sirens on going through intersections when they're on call, as well as taking an extensive training course to get certified to drive the EMS vehicle. Well, with that being said, nobody is doing the training, evidently because people are driving these ambulances, and they don't know the law. They're going through intersections without the sirens on. They're having lights on. That's why my son is no longer here. Bright sunny day, commercial area, lights on, no sirens, had no way of knowing they were even approaching. And my son was tragically hit and killed. Now we have an honor in his, a law in his honor that they are not enforcing. That is such a slap to the face to the family. We're grieving. We're still going through. Our lives have been devastated, tragically changed. And how dare you not uphold the law that has been set in place to not only continue my son's legacy, but to protect and serve and keep other families from experiencing the tragedy that we've experienced? So now we have this law, but what good is the law if you're not enforcing it? I'm ashamed to say I was born and raised in Waukegan. This is my home city, but you have failed me when it comes to upholding this law and making sure that it is executed and no other families go through what we're going through. And I lost a son, my greatest sacrifice. My son was a sacrificial lamb. He's no longer here. And how dare you disrespect the grieving family by not enforcing the law? I really want to hold the fire department, the fire chief, lead by example. This happened on your watch. These were your workers. Lead by example. You start at the top. They should be enforcing this law. If nobody gets it right, Waukegan should have it perfected. Because Donald Stalworth III is no longer here. His blood was shed down the street, and Waukegan Fire Department is the reason our lives have been devastated, tragically changed, but we'll never be the same. And they cannot uphold... I'm talking for my husband because he don't talk. We got three moments. You're welcome. So...
No, I'm sorry, ma'am. The three minutes is done.
Three minutes for both of us.
I thought it was three minutes together.
No, you put it together. I'm sorry, ma'am. You can't, you can't give away your time. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry. But we do have Antoinette Diedrich. Antoinette Diedrich.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Okay, my name is Antoinette Diedrich. I am one of the older siblings of Donald Stalworth. And I myself, since January 1st, 2024, I have watched Waukegan Fire Department go through intersections without having sirens on. It's a total disrespect to our family. We chased down the ambulances to let them know. It's a law in place. It was a law that required all Illinois EMTs to have sirens and lights on as of January 1st, 2024. We followed the ambulance, I followed the ambulances to wherever they were going, and Waukegan Police was there to notify and let them know, hey, you just went through this intersection on 10th and Jackson, and you didn't have on not one siren. Then made a phone call to the mayor's office to notify and let them know. But if Waukegan did their job, they wouldn't have to go through with what our family is going through. It's a tragic loss. My mother's only son, the youngest out of five. He was a mentor and a role model to my two children, which are boys, and he is no longer here. We need Waukegan to do their part. It's been a year. It's been a year since that law has been in effect. We need them to do their part. And then at that, yeah, some of Lake County EMTs I know because I was just recently at an EMT Training Center. They don't even know the law of Act 1251. It's been a year now, like I stated. They don't know the law. If I asked, I asked a total of about six EMT drivers, hey, do you know what Act 1251 is? No. Okay, well, on May 16th, 2022, my brother, my little brother, was hit and killed by an EMT driver downtown Waukegan. Oh, yeah, I heard that story. That was the response. But we need them to know the law. You know, it's a job requirement. I'm in the healthcare field myself. And guess what? If I go in there and make a mistake, who going to be held accountable for it? So they need to know. They need to do their job. We all here to save lives, but come on, we got to do it the right way. We got to do it the right way. No mistakes.
Thank you, ma'am. Kevin O'Connor.
Hi, I'm Attorney Kevin O'Connor. I know most of you. I've represented the Stalworth family. I represent a number of other people with the city. DJ Stalworth didn't die in vain. Just remember that. DJ Stalworth did not die in vain. I came before this committee over 10 years ago. Most of you weren't even on this committee. And it related to officers, police officers, things that went wrong. I volunteered my time. I said I would help the city. Several council members turned their back to me and said, we don't want your help. I reported an officer who I warned was going to kill somebody. Two years later, he ended up killing somebody, and it cost the city tremendously. There's a law that passed that said minors shouldn't be questioned without, you know, a parent or a, you know, a lawyer present. The city of Waukegan didn't have that training. The minor was questioned, confessed to something he didn't do. Cost the city a lot of money. Do you see a pattern going on here? This is a pattern because I took the deposition of the fire chief, and the answers were, related to this case, is it's discretionary. It's whatever the drivers decide is safe is discretionary. Well, there's proactive and there's reactive people. And I'm tired of this city being reactive. When something happens, you do something. This law got passed because somebody got killed. We need to get to the next step and be proactive. You got to prevent things from happening before they do. If there is another case with an ambulance, this city will be bankrupt because this law passed here. This law came from here. This law is grounded here, yet the people who are here don't even know it. They're still violating it, and it comes from the top. What happened, I volunteered to help this city. I'm going to do it again, and I may have to volunteer you without you knowing it. I'll be glad to sit down with Chartrice, speak with the paramedics and say, hey, look, here's the law. Here's what's changed. Here's what you need to do so that they know what it is. I know the resources are slim. You don't want to send people out for training. I will volunteer my time. I'm sure she will hers. And we want to make it our mission to go from city to city so that everybody knows this. I don't want to represent another DJ Stalworth family. I really don't. Hearing grieving mothers and fathers and brothers and sisters, it's horrible. Seeing his son be here and look like him and act like him is something I don't ever want to go through again, and I don't think anybody else here does either. We have to make that change, and we have to make sure it starts from the top and make sure that things are being taught. They are not being taught. When I asked the chief about being taught, he said he didn't know the difference between proactive and reactive. That's a shame because everyone in the business out here knows what that is.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Brianna Stalworth. Brianna. I'm going to move on. The next six will be William Powers, Sharnelius Diedrich, O'Shanna Stalworth, Nahaya Edwards, Jose Guzman, and Margaret Carrasco. So I have Mr. William Powers.
Good evening. My name is William Powers. We own a development company in Waukegan by the name of RTO Property. We own and manage about 350 units. Last year, we paid $934,000 in property taxes, mostly in Waukegan. I'd like to comment on the YMCA development that was discussed at the last council meeting. First, I want to say I'm happy for Mickey that he's going to do something with that building. We looked at it years ago, and I think it's a good project. Mickey's a good little developer, and I think he'll do a great job with it. My question is why the city put $1,007,000 into a small project like that when they had the opportunity to redevelop 10 North Sheridan two and a half years ago? I had that property under contract, and all I wanted from the city was parking. I asked to rent and redo the COVID lot so that I could provide parking for that 70-unit apartment complex. I didn't get responses from two of the aldermen that are sitting here today when I reached out to all of them, okay? I got, I got responses from some, and they were for the project, but I just don't understand why $1.7 million is given to a project that's a third the size that the city had an opportunity to develop. We had the product, property under contract. We did $20,000 in due diligence, and we walked away from that project because we got no response. What makes this even a little bit more frustrating is the city is providing parking for that development at a rate that is the same as a nonprofit that's coming to town. I know you're all aware of Jocelyn Group, right? They're moving into the building across the street from the Genesee Theater. They're our largest tenant. We own a 37,000-square-foot building in Grayslake. They're a great organization that provides mental health services for the most needed in our community. And they're, they're taking spots at 35 bucks apiece as well. And it just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, an organization like that should pay $5 or $10 a spot for bringing 50 staff into the town instead of $35, which is what you're providing to the developers. So it just, it puts salt on the wound. You know, we've moved on, right? We did a $12 million development down in Florida. We did a $7 million development in Grayslake. But, you know, with a new administration probably coming into this, this city, I think you really need to look at, when quality developers are putting their hard money at risk and they're willing to do something for this city without any help, no help, you need to look at those projects more closely and really give them full consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharnelius Diedrich.
Hello, I'm Sharnelius Diedrich. I'm going to make this short and simple. I feel like y'all took greatness from us. And all we ask is that we get the word out for the new law, train ambulances so another family don't got to go through this. He left behind siblings, a child, parents, like... How do you tell a family it's going to be better? It's not. And I just don't want y'all to, I just don't want to slap in the face. My mom went through all of this. And all we want is just for the ambulances to abide by the law. So another family don't got to go through this. So another family don't gotta go through this. That's it.
Thank you. O'Shanna Stallworth. O'Shanna? No, O'Shanna? Nahaya Edwards? Jose Guzman?
Good evening, City Council. Um, approximately, I think it was last week sometime, I received like two phone calls about a gentleman who's a chairman in one of our boards. Okay? Can you hear me now? Can you hear? Okay. So I guess this gentleman, who's a chairman of one of our boards, went to a pub and started, uh, saying privileged information that he only received because he's a chairman of the board, and started, uh, telling the whole bar about what was going on. And that we were gonna get Jose Guzman all because I voted for the short-term leases a different way than he did. And that just went off. These, this person is Jack Die, chairman of the Port District Board. And Mandy Die, his wife, went to a pub and started saying privileged information that his, that the Port District management gave him because he was the chairman of the Port District Board, and went around saying it. So I called two or three people, because I wanted to verify. And it was verified, that he did spill out privileged information. This is why, when you're sitting up there and you're sitting on one of these boards, they tell you, this is for your information purposes only. Before you go out and say anything, better make sure this doesn't bite you. And that's why a privilege was taken away from the State Council because of this. And now this happens. This is why I'm so tough on these board members. They feel like they could just do anything they want. Okay? And this is not right. I think it should be noted. Somebody should put up, put down for negligence, for abuse of power. And kicked off, and removed. Because he only found out this because he had privileged information. That's it. That's the only reason why.
Can I put a motion to look into this?
Are you finished, sir?
Yes, I am.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're gonna go on to Margaret Carrasco.
Wow. Okay, I'll just try to get it all in. Uh, first of all, um, I haven't spoke to Mr. Guzman, but I heard about that crap that he said, okay? It's like he told more people than at the bar, okay? Uh, he needs to be removed. Next thing is asbestos was brought up. Um, sir, you need to address that with the mayor's chief of staff, George Bittner's back there, and ask him, how many buildings has, projects has he been involved illegally removing asbestos? Next, um, just so everyone people know, the mayor has four dogs, okay? And everybody else, residents, when you go, they tell you you only have three. Nowhere does it say, oh, you know what, by the way, you can have four. If you do this, 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 and the procedures, nothing. Um, seventh, uh, next thing, Black history. All right, the Black community needs to know this. When a community organization put in the application for a Juneteenth, Juneteenth parade this year, Ann Taylor wanted to charge them $75,000. Meanwhile, her campaign supporter, Oscar, we know who that is, she only charged her for that mega parade $4,000, according to financials, okay? That, that sources have told it. She charged me $15,000, okay? So, uh, cronyism, racism. But actually, what I'm here tonight is to address the article about raids hindering Waukegan's lead pipe efforts. Uh, well, first of all, um, girlfriend here went on to say, you know, about, oh, she's so concerned about, you know, the funds. It's the problem with you. You only care about the money. You don't care about the people. But, um, agents, it goes on to say the agents began the raids, ICE raids, on January 25th, 26th, then residents would not open the door. That's right. Waukegan residents do not open your door. No, abre sus puertas. Because on Tuesday, she makes this big thing about, oh, you're safe in Waukegan, there's no ICE. Liar! We have 30 agents with guns that started from Glensboro and Lewis and went door to door all the way down to Belvedere. We are not gonna open our doors. Next. And you knew about it ahead of time. She knew that immigration's gonna do this, raids, and she didn't say anything. She lied to her community, saying, oh, you're safe, don't worry about... Oh, no. Oh, no. Next, we're gonna go on to your girlfriend, Liz Uline, who, hypocritical, very damaging, discriminatory, inhumane, paying Mexican workers that she brought up from Mexico $38 a day. She needs to be removed from the Genesee Theater Board immediately.
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco.
I finally applaud your party against her, too.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to revisit Brianna Stallworth. Are you ready? Brianna Stallworth? No? Brianna, no? Okay. Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going on to, um, a consent agenda. And...
I'll make a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
Make a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, any questions to the agenda? To the consent agenda? Anything wanna be pulled?
What is the last one? I don't remember that one.
Um, that was something that was heard, um, a while back. Um, do you have questions about it?
No, I just don't remember it. Is it the parking lot? Yeah. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Okay. Um, item A, um, well, first off, I need, uh, you said the first? Alderman Turner, who was the second?
I'll second.
Alderman Donaworth was the second. Okay. Um, item A, a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, February 3rd, 2025. Item B, a motion to approve and ratify regular payroll dated February 7th, 2025 in a total amount of $2,39,816.35. Item C, a motion to approve and ratify miscellaneous payroll dated February 7th, 2025 in a total amount of $43,522.62. Item D, a motion to approve vendor payments dated February 17th, 2025, totaling in the amount of $1,960,921.78. Item E, an ordinance approving variances from a lot coverage requirements for 230 Stewart Avenue. Um, this was on the, uh, community development on February 3rd. There being no questions to the motions. Roll call, please.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donaworth?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Treasurers' Report. Dr. Schwab?
Mayor, I'm Dr. John Schwab. I'm the treasurer for the city of Waukegan. The monthly treasurer report has been filed with our city clerk and is posted in the city website. The report lists all the funds the treasurer has in the city and accounts and the amounts in them. The treasurer's office is responsible for recording all the money coming in and seeing that it gets in the proper account according to the ordinance and the state law. I'm responsible for the safety of the money. Shortly after I became treasurer 16 years ago, I suspected that there was theft, they were stealing, uh, in the collector's office. I changed some procedures to stop that. I called Waukegan Defectives, and in a couple of days, a employee was, was charged. Going forward, I brought credit cards to the city of Waukegan. When I got here, a citizen couldn't pay with a credit card for anything. Water bill, simple parking ticket, city sticker. If you forgot your checkbook, you had to go get it. Now you can use a credit card at City Hall, over the phone, electronic payment, and I've installed a cash machine in the vestibule of City Hall. If there's any questions, please call me personally at 847-856-9154, or call my office at 847-599-2569. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schwab. Onto old business. Item A, can I have a first and a second to this?
So move.
That's Alderman Martinez, second.
Second.
Alderman Turner. Um, any questions to the motion? Alderman Florian?
Mayor, I just want clarification. So if we want to reconsider and approve legal counsel for the alderman, we vote yes. If we don't want to reconsider, we vote no. Is that correct?
That is correct. So just for the benefit of the, um, of the public here tonight, tonight we have, the first thing on old business is a motion to reconsider a motion to authorize selection of legislative legal counsel for members of the city council. On January 21st, um, there was a vote to, and it was a motion. It wasn't a resolution, but it was a motion to authorize the selection of attorneys, one or more attorneys, for the city council that would be separate from corporation council. That motion prevailed by a vote of, I believe, five to four. Uh, the mayor, pursuant to her authority, issued a veto message at the last meeting. And, um, under Article 3.1, which is the form of government that the city, that the city is, the mayor has the opportunity to veto legislation. Once the mayor has vetoed legislation, the next step is that it automatically comes back to the city council for reconsideration. To overturn the mayor's veto, um, it, the motion must be passed by two-thirds of all the alderpersons then holding office. We currently have nine alderpersons. We have Alderman, um, Newsom is not here tonight, but that doesn't matter. That doesn't affect the number of the vote. So you would need six votes, six yea votes, to overturn the mayor's veto. So if you want this motion for legislative council to move forward, vote yes. If you don't want it to move forward, vote no. Six votes must be yeses.
If I may?
I have a question.
Yes.
Would the, um, missing person, would their vote be toward the majority?
No. So it doesn't, um, if someone is absent, their vote never counts. If someone abstains, if they're present and they abstain, then it's considered to be, to, to go with the majority. But if someone is not here, their vote just doesn't count. So you need six people who are present tonight.
Okay. Um, shouldn't the motion be to override the veto?
So, that is practically what it is. But under the statute, it actually refers to a motion to reconsider. It's practically, it is a motion to override the veto. And if, but I wanted to hold true to the statute, so there was no question about legally what you were doing.
Thank you, sir.
And again, I think you'd have to put this in the May 1st budget because there's no money allocated for that presently. And it would, it would, we couldn't take it from the contract we have with the existing council. The other thing that's not in here, does each alderman want their own individual attorney? Or would there be one attorney that would represent, you know, all the aldermen? And then, um, the other thing is, is that, um, legal counsel going to be present at the meetings as well so that they have the information that happens at council? So those will all have to be things that would have to be defined, um, when this comes. But it would be May 1st that the money would be allocated. Alderman Guzman?
Also, one more thing I wanna add, uh, Mayor, if this does pass, we don't get friends in here, we don't do anything. We do it the right way. If it passes, we will go to Illinois Municipal League, and we will ask for a recommendation, three attorneys, or the Bar Association, three attorneys, and then you go from there. So this won't be considered as cronyism or, or whatever else you wanna call it, favoritism, or what, whichever way you wanna call it. But it will not work that way.
Oh, I will say my reasons again for why I vetoed it. It is because we've never had differences in, you can put, and I know, Kevin, you're looking at me. You could put 10,000 attorneys in a room, and you're gonna get 10,000 different opinions. It is very rare that you're going to get, um, a, even among different partners. That's why you guys all sit as a group and talk things out and give us one opinion. Um, I think they are a highly respected municipal, uh, law firm. I don't see the reason for having the extra cost. And are they representing the alderman individually, like personal? Or are they here for the city? Um, but that would be something that, those were my reasons. I also thought it was a highly political thing. But that's my objection. But the aldermen can do what they wanna do, okay? So that's what the vote is with that. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
I just wanna ask, is there any question about what a yea vote means versus a nay vote?
Can you, um, go over it, just to make sure?
Okay. If you want to overturn the mayor's veto and you want the city council to have its own attorney, and/or select its own attorney, vote yes. If you don't think that the city council needs its own attorney, vote no. I hope I didn't put too much spin on that. Is that clear?
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Guzman?
This was diff...
Pardon me?
I said this one was difficult for me. At first, I was like a yea vote. Then I moved on to a no vote. Then I was like, okay, gone back and forth. I guess my vote is yea.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yea.
Felix?
I'll go over my reasons why yea. And, uh, Alderman's time.
Turner?
Aye.
Donaworth?
Aye.
Florian? No. Hayes?
No.
Bolton?
I have to say something before I give my vote, but I wanna give the reason. So Mayor, you and I talked, and you made some valid points, um, in reference to expense. But when I saw the article in the newspaper saying this is a political move, it made me remember the fact that when we were considering the casino, we did that properly. And as Stu had mentioned, the municipal, state, Supreme Court vindicated that issue. And it has, and I understand, Mayor, that, and maybe you can give clarity to this, that you went to the attorneys outside of our council and talked to Patawata Me's attorney. And maybe you can clarify that. But when I received a numerous of calls reminding me about that, it really made me change my vote. Because also, it cost the city over $500,000. And it has taken four years to resolve. So with that being said, I say yes.
Can I clarify that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am. Alderman Bolton, you said, did you say yes? Ma'am, yes? Was that a yes?
Said yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, the yeses have it. Motion?
Okay. Can I clarify your question for you, though?
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, the only thing that... So the only thing that I've ever talked to a Potawatomi attorney about was they had wanted it put on a city council meeting. And I, along with Alderman Moseo and along with Alderman Florian, had no problem with it coming back and being heard, because then they were heard. That was the one and only time I've ever talked to a Potawatomi attorney. And then I think we all had to go for a deposition that were here at the time, and there were never any questions that came up. So there was nothing that ever happened after that. So like I said, I wanted them to have the chance to be heard because I thought it might stop them from going further, but that was it. So.
Thank you.
B, can I have a first and a second?
First.
Alderman Turner, second.
Second.
Alderman Turner. Okay, this is, this was something that was held over, and it's a resolution approving the First Amendment to the lease agreement with Gillian Marine Construction LLC for a portion of the water plant parking lot property. I think there was some confusion on Alderman Guzman?
Yes. Actually, I, actually, I, actually, my proposal was to cancel this contract due to the fact that they're a construction company, they're moving in and out of our road, they're not only costing us our road condition, which last time we were told, it's $7 million, $7 million to fix Seahorse Drive. And that is our whole budget for our roads program now, even over that. And then we want to extend their contract. And then the agreement was that they were supposed to go on water, to move their product through water and not on our streets. Because what they're going to pay us in rent, it's not, it's not going to cover their damage. I mean, if it, if it was up to me and this does pass, I mean, I'll buy some, I'll put a motion to buy some scales right now and weigh every single truck and find every single truck until it moves. But no, they need to stop.
Can I clarify? So road proposal, that's, that road has been needing to be done for years, and we are looking into that now. But this was a contract that came up before. If we're going to be business friendly, us canceling contracts with people who have made, you know, made a contract with us doesn't necessarily make us look good. There is not, I don't ever remember it being a water contract because they still have to be able to use our road to get through to the Port Authority who has another contract with them.
And just, just to be clear about the very limited nature of this specific amendment, this contract has been on month-to-month for a very long time. They've come completely, they've come completely current on their rent. This only goes through December. There is no proposal to extend this past December. Work on Seahorse Drive will not start this year. So this will not impact the work. It will not damage the road, I mean, if it damages the road further, the road is going to be completely rebuilt next year after this contract is done. So this does not, and Lisa, Noel, if I'm saying this all correctly, this does not have any impact or will not make the road worse or increase cost for Seahorse Drive. Actually, just to the mayor, the mayor's point is that this organization does have contracts with suppliers, and this would basically impede those contracts if we canceled at this point.
Can I say something? I do respect Alderman, Alderman Guzman's worries, but I, I think, in my opinion, for, since the contract is till December and we're planning to redo it, I think it, I'm for keeping the contract as is, but also what he said is, we, I think we, at some point, if we're, we do need a weigh station there. I think that's something that we should look into, and I think that was part of the rap, part of the rap discussion, too.
Okay. I, I mean, Lisa, would you?
I just wanted to make a quick correction. Phase one engineering is supposed to take place in fiscal year 2020, in the next fiscal year, 2026. Phase one engineering does not mean the road will be redone next year. Phase one engineering means it's going to be a couple of years, so. And, and, and I'm all for weighing trucks and putting weight limits on the roads, and I'm all for protecting Seahorse Drive. I have been since day one. But what I will say is, by extending the contract, we had bad communication with this lease for many years. No one was really assigned these leases on the lakefront, and so we're just trying to give them till the end of the year so they can clear out their business and figure out what they're going to do in future years. The other thing I'd like to point out is that we have other businesses on Seahorse Drive that also drive semi-truck trailers. So I'm all for the weights and the weight limits on the, so we agree.
Coordinator May. Okay, last time you gave us the same spiel. This is why we came up only until April, that, that they were all going to be gone, they were all going to be done with, and we weren't going to have to deal with this anymore. If you look, we could look it up in the minutes, because you're giving me a confused look over there.
I don't remember addressing-
It said very clearly, I remember the briefing that said, "This will be done in April." And this should be done in April.
So.
And I understand the Port District is there, but hey, close the gates. They cannot use our streets. They, their rent does not justify the condition of our roads, and not just Seahorse Drive. We're talking either the Amstutz, Grand Avenue, Sheridan Road. These are all roads that they go on. So I, no. Take some more else.
That's something that we're addressing in a different way by getting a new scale for the police department and starting to do the finding of trucks that are carrying too much. And that's kind of, that's a whole separate issue from this. This is a contract that has been signed, and again, we've kind of coordinated this with the Port Authority over the years so that both leases will end at the same time, and then we can start addressing, getting, you know, the road straightened out and that kind of stuff. Right now, even if you're in phase one, that we're just starting to go into, you still have phase two, you're probably talking three years down the road before we're going to really get to that. So I would let them finish out a contract. I don't think it sends a good message when you have a contract with the city and then you say, no, we're, we're going to walk away from you because we just don't like what you're doing to a road that's already beat up.
Like I said, you could look back at the minutes, they were supposed to be done in April. It was the same argument, let's only give them to April, let's only give them April, and we will be done. And that's it. It's April, that's it. It's over. We're wasting too much money.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something, if I may. So Alderman Guzman, what I believe you're referring to is we also have a contract with Michael's Construction, who also, they've been working on the project up north in Winter Harbor, the whole shore erosion. Their, their lease also ends in April of '24, and the Port District, I think, right now has an unsigned lease with Gillian for that little plot, but they've been there for decades. Gillian has been on, so the parcel, just for everyone's edification, the parcel, there's a parcel that's completely landlocked by City Waukegan Property that the Port Authority owns on the inside of the harbor, our side of the harbor, and Gillian Marine has been there for years. There is no, we never made an agreement with them to bring in their materials per, by barge, because that's the whole point of their Waukegan location. And I agree, I don't want, I do not want truckloads of boulders coming through the municipal beach forever and ever. That's what's, it's not a good, it's not a good look. But that's the whole point of this location. They bring the boulders in, they offload them onto their property, and they put them on barges and take them out to their jobs. So alls I was, alls I was proposing and trying to assist the company in doing was letting them finish out their 2025 contracts so that we're not hurting their business. It's not hurting us because the road's already messed up, and then in 2025, we're done with them. In the meantime, it gives the city a chance to get our ordinance together on weight limits on these roads and start doing some enforcement, and then we can figure out, I'm not sure what they'll do, that'll be their business decision, if we're able to discontinue them driving through the, through the roads to the beach. Gypsum is there, they, they own their property, their trucks are going to continue to come. So we'll have to figure out, as a council, you'll have to figure out how to regulate that.
Okay, and then you're only talking about one road. You keep saying one road, Seahorse Drive. No, Seahorse Drive doesn't go through the whole thing. You're talking about Illinois 132, Taxpier's Road, Sheridan Road, Amstutz, that we just put up a proposition to redo this road or, or whatever we're going to do with it, and how much is that going to cost us?
Agreed.
Okay, this is tax art that is not reaping the benefit. The dollar amount does not justify keeping them there.
Agreed.
If it was a, if it was, if it was a company, we bankrupt, because we're wasting more than we're getting back.
Alderman Florian, did you have a question?
Um, I just, I know you mentioned the other organization or company is doing the erosion control. What, are they doing erosion control as well? What do they do with the boulders?
That's what they're doing, yeah.
Okay.
Private contracts up and down.
So this is all about keeping erosion off of the shore?
Their business really picked up over the last several years. Shore erosion is a big topic for Lake Michigan. That's why we just had a $74 million project that the IDNR funded all along our lakefront from the state line all the way down to Zion. Shore erosion's a big deal. So the, there's people that owns homes in Wilmette and Highland Park and Winnetka who hire these companies to come on and build up their shores, and that's what Gillian does.
Exactly. Wealthy communities, Wilmette, and that they can afford it, so they use somebody who's not wealthy to ruin the roads, move through our cities with the noise, the bouncing, and keep on, I mean, the diesel fumes, and they use us as backdoor steps.
Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Absolutely not.
Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Guzman?
No.
Martinez?
No.
Felix?
I vote no.
Turner? Donaworth?
Yes.
Florian?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion pass. In new business, is there anybody who wants to do an omnibus?
I saw move.
A second.
A second.
Okay, that was Alderman Turner, second was Alderman Bolton.
Mayor, can we pull out item J?
So it's item A through I, and then we'll do item K. Okay.
J and K.
J was one that we pulled out.
Okay, how about K?
Okay. Item A, a resolution approving the award of the FY 2025 Row Program Number Two to Peter Baker &amp; Son for a not-to-exceed amount of $2,461,197.65. Item B, a resolution approving the award of the FY 2025 Sidewalk Program Number Two to D-Land Construction for a not-to-exceed amount of $1,688,237.50. Item C, a resolution approving the expenditure of funds for sealing the tile replacement at Public Works by Bowler Construction for a not-to-exceed amount of $55,790. Item D, an ordinance approving to dispose of various surplus equipment through Ominif Auction Services. Item E, resolution approving to utilize the services of Ballard Marine Construction for the chemical line nozzle replacement per Section 2-458-I-5 High Degree of Skill for an amount not to exceed $53,000. Item F, a resolution approving and authorizing the city's local share contribution for the U.S. Department of Transportation better utilizing investments to leverage development, the Build Grant Program for the Illinois 137 Sheridan Row Corridor, Waukegan Lakefront Corridor, Rail Corridor Realignment and Intermodal Station Project. Item G, a resolution of the City of Waukegan, Illinois reallocated 2025 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove. Item H, a resolution approving an agreement with the Paramedic Billing Services, Inc., for the fire and ambulance billing services. Item I, a resolution approving a settlement and release of all claims for the Police Department Employee Compensation Claim Number 240411WO023 for a not-to-exceed amount of $54,523.80. Item K, an-
That's the word I wanted to pull out, J and K.
Okay. Um, okay. So items A through K, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. A through I, I'm sorry. So that is to I, we pulled out J and K, is that correct? All right, Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donaworth?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have a first and a second to item J?
I saw move, second.
Okay, Guzman and Turner. This is an ordinance amending, well, first off, I'll ask any questions to the motion. Okay, an ordinance amending Section 15-127 of the Waukegan Code of Ordinances to allow state-sanctioned boxing and full-contact martial art matches to be conducted in the Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donaworth?
Aye.
Florian?
No.
Hayes?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have a first and a second to item K?
First.
Okay. Alderman Felix was the first, second was Alderman Turner.
Aye, yes.
This is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Waukegan, Illinois, to create a new Class E1 liquor license. This is for the outdoor dining.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any questions to the motion?
No, we can move forward, I just didn't remember what it was for.
Okay, roll call, please. Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donaworth?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, it is alderperson's time. Alderman Guzman?
Good evening, I was a little upset because of the whole lease agreement. I mean, if, I mean, if you look at the cost to benefit ratio, I mean, this is why we're losing money. Okay? Because the cost to benefit ratio is just not there. It should have been canceled and called it a day. Then we work with other business entities to bring the money in. Okay? So we keep giving more out than we're getting back. And that's why every single time there's a motion for some, a new ordinance or anything, I'm always the first one to add the, what is it, a penalty fee, a convenience fee, or, or whatever kind of fee in there for a reason. Okay? Everybody always wants to spend money. Okay? Just throw money, but nobody wants to make it. If you saw what it said during Committee of the House, every single one of those proposals was to spend money. Nothing, at least one item was not to make money. All right? That's why I, I made a different proposal. I said, just give me a small, a small amount of money with these little projects, and I'll make you money, because that's the key. You could spend, that's fine. We're here to spend, I mean, we're here to move the economy, we're here to stimulate, and so on and so forth. But you're, at the same time, you need more money coming in also. So please remember that, and that's how the city should move forward. When you are a representative of, of the city of Waukegan, okay, with any board member, commission, or alder, alderperson, you are given a privilege to- commission, or alder, alderperson, you are given a privilege to, like we are by the public, to sit on this diocese and make tough decisions. And they are tough decisions because what affects you the most, whether state or federal or county, they do, they do affect you. But your immediate effect is your city council. Every decision that is made here affects your daily lives on a daily, on a daily basis. So you conduct yourself in an appropriate manner, and you move forward. You try your best. I know some people get very excited, emotional, and I, I have, I'm a fault of it too. I do. Because we care so much about our city and who we represent. But you can't just go out there and just take privileged information and just give it out. I think we have done a lot in the last two and a half years, uh, two years, like the gentleman who came up there to the podium and said that at a very low cost, we could have had a new development, but we didn't. Okay? With, but this previous council thought about it a different way, and would have worked at it a different way. Okay? Because we see the importance of bringing revenue in. Again, benefit to cost ratio. So that's why I keep going and voting for more benefit. What is going to bring in, if we're going to be spending like drunken sailors, we better be allocating like drunken captains and taking everything we can. So let's please keep that in mind and move forward with this. I, I think we only have a few more weeks of snow left, so if you guys enjoy the snow, it's a little bitter cold. Look out for your neighbors out there and, because it is going to be cold this, rest of this week. We should have some warm-up times, but we're almost over that loop, and then spring's right around the corner. And please still remember, I mean, it is getting lighter out there. I think now it's like six o'clock that the sun is, it's getting dark. But remember, there's still kids running around, they're still going to school, they're moving around. So when you see those school buses and they pull out their red stop sign with their flashing lights, please stop and then wait a few minutes to see where the actual child is going through, if it's behind the bus, in front of the bus, just to give them enough time, because kids like to, like, talk to their friends or whatever, and then move on. So stay safe out there, thank you, have a good day. Oh, Happy Valentine's Day.
Alderman Martinez?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk and Council. But before I begin, I, I, I do like to extend my heartfelt, the Stallworth family and what you're going through. I, you know, the manner that it occurred and the, the simple fact is that there was a law created, and we should be leading to example. And so I, I, I hope that we can look deeper into this and get the resolution that you seek. But my heart goes out to you. I can't even begin to fathom what you guys are going through. Also, I also like to give the condolences, my condolences to the Kirkwood family and the, the loss of their son and other tragic loss that occurred. My prayers are for the family and the whole city is mourning, it's a great loss. And so the city of Waukegan mourns with them also. I also want to talk about the 2025 Row Program list in the Third Ward. Before I begin, I got to give my, my shout-outs to Mr. Chris Garland, Alonzo, the mayor, the city for getting these streets finally addressed. But there, in the Third Ward, there's four major streets that are going to be done. Again, that's the sidewalk program, this is the lead pipe program. I will be making my rounds, I will be boots to the ground, going to each and every home to let them know that this is the procedure. I want to make sure that everybody's on board and they understand. But the streets that, the four streets in particular is North Metropolitan, and that's going to be between Brookside and Grand Avenue, and then we have Leaf Avenue. Again, that's going to be between Brookside and all the way to Grand Avenue. We also have Hyde Park Avenue between Burwick Boulevard to North Lewis Avenue, and then we have, uh, uh, North Greta, and that's going to be between Washington West and West Monroe Street. Also, there's, there's sidewalks that, that are going to be addressed. I was very diligent in trying to get these addressed because they did, the city's going to do over nine hundred and seventy-three feet of sidewalk in our ward. Why? Because I calculated, and that's what it came out to be. So again, I, I, again, I thank you guys for, you know, for the, for all the help, and, not only do I thank you, but the constituents of the Third Ward also thanks you. Just also want to let you guys know again what the, what, please, with the warm weather, you know, if, if you have animals, please, you know, let them do their business, come back, let them come back, and please don't let them out. You know, I've been getting phone, I have been getting phone calls, especially this weekend where, and pictures sent to me where there's feral cats out there, and some, and some instances, there were cats five, six deep, you know, and there's no owners. Unfortunately, we do not have, and I'm glad Nicole was here earlier, because that was part of my, my, my speech tonight, the simple fact that, that we don't have trapping. We do have an organization that does do so. That organization is called Spay and Stay. They are located in Gray's Lake. Please, if you need to get ahold of them, they do trapping. That number's eight four seven two eight nine four seven seven, four five seven seven, again, that's four five seven seven. Or you can also get a, get ahold of me. I'm at eight four seven three nine zero two six eight nine. But it kind of, it was devastating to see these poor cats out there, were nowhere to go. So please also understand that, as Nicole indicated earlier, you only can have three pets in total in your home. There shouldn't be four, there shouldn't be five. So also, please, obliged by that. Also, I'm also in the works, I bent boots to the ground in my, in my ward, talking to small business owners. We are going to create a small business committee within the Third Ward. The biggest obstacle we have now is scheduling. People have different time zones. I mean, when you own a business, it's very hard to get a lot of business owners together to create this, this committee and meeting. But we are working out the kinks. We are, I should have something probably early May. It is my goal and my hope that I can get all the small businesses together, create, create a committee to address the situation, the problems that we do have in our ward, and also to come together at the common ground to, you know, to work together and see what we can do to improve our, our ward. If you need to get ahold of me, I can be reached at eight four seven three nine zero two six eight nine. I ask that, please, be, stay warm, be safe, be mindful, and let's all be a good neighbor. Thank you and good night.
Alderman Felix?
Thank you. Do I want to mention, I'm going to have a Neighborhood Watch Meeting, March 5th, at La Canoa. It's going to be at six P.M., and it's going to be a Neighborhood Watch Meeting in open forum. I would like to hear your concerns as to what your concerns are in the, in the Fourth Ward. Definitely invite everyone to be there. Please reach out to me for, for additional information. A few things that I want to mention regarding the developers that were here before. I have, I have heard a lot of stories of, a lot of energy, a lot of time put in for, for development in the city in the past, previous administrations, and, you know, for whatever reason, they weren't addressed or were helped. I'm finding that the, there's an issue where, you know, it's, we're, it's, they're helping. I think a lot of these developers are needing help to get them to help us ultimately, to develop our city, which is what, what I, I'm doing now. So I can't speak for, for the previous administrations, but right now, our current administration has positioned us in a way where we can do these things, and I'm going to push forward for these developments, you know, and if you guys have questions, I'm always open to hear suggestions, you know, and I'm here for you. We're, we want your business. Regarding the lawyer, this is part of that. We're going to utilize a lawyer to help us, you know, push some of these projects forward, and also push some of the, you know, for example, our code compliance. They're, they're working on their, their process. Great. You know, I think we've been asking for this for a while, but they're doing a great job. But this is the kind of things that we want to do already. We don't want to wait another two years. We want to do it already. And again, we're positioned in, in where we can do that now. I want to do, thank everyone for their, for their support in voting for this, and for Alderman Turner for bringing this up. I don't think it's political, I think it's more than anything, we want to have a strong partnership together with the mayor, with the current mayor, and, and get these things passed. So that's how I see it. I don't see it as a negative thing, I see it as a positive light, and we're, I'm excited to see what we can get done with this. And for the Stallworth family, thank you guys for being here. Your concerns will be considered and definitely will work with the council members to make sure this gets addressed. Regarding the grass companies, one, part of my, part of my vision, right, for my, you know, at least for my, for the Fourth Ward, but, you know, obviously, it's going to help everyone out, is I want to have the contracts stay in Waukegan, or at least local, right? And give those contracts to people for our, our community. We don't want the money to leave. We want it to stay in Waukegan. That's part of developing our city, too, want the money to stay in Waukegan, and we should get local contractors to, to take care of our city. Of course, they're going to be more, feel more invested in our city if they're doing the work here. And also, you know, give these contracts to, of course, everyone fairly, but also, you know, to our minority, minority companies. We want to see our, our people, people that live in the city work in our city. And we're, we're getting there, we're achieving that. And there's a lot of people that are interested in doing that, and I think that's a positive thing. Let's see. Uh, oh, yes. Do you want to put a, is it a motion, or, I want to get this, this looked into, this with, with Alderman Guzman stated. So, you the council?
I think the most appropriate thing for Alderman Guzman is to submit a, a written explanation of what he's heard, and that it can be looked into and probably discussed by the city council in closed session. And I think, you know-
Okay. Do I have to make a motion for that, or?
No, I think, I, I think, you know, this is, if, this kind of looks like it's the outer bounds of like an ethics complaint, so I think the most appropriate thing would be Alderman Guzman to submit something in writing directly to the mayor, and can copy the whole city council on it if he feels appropriate.
Okay.
And obviously, you know, the, the position our firm is in with representing both bodies, I think there's probably good reason to have this taken someplace else.
Okay. Perfect. Good. And last thing.
For a possible removal?
For all, well, it would be, you would, the, the question is what-
Consideration.
Yeah, for basically consideration of what the next steps are. The, the mayor has power over that, that particular office that you discussed, and I think, you know, beyond the, the, what you said today, which is, you know, I think for, you, you didn't get into specifics probably for obvious reasons, so I think you can, you can submit something confidentially to the mayor.
Last thing I wanted to say, same thing with, with the grass contracts, also, we'd like to put a motion to split the call volume for the towing company. I don't know if we have one or how many, but I would like to make sure that we divide it also. Can I make a motion for that?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I mean, why don't you submit, I mean, rather than doing this on the floor, why don't you just submit it to us, and then it gives us time to look at it and put it in a motion form? So just submit it, just do like we asked.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't even have to be a motion, if we can agree maybe in a policy, I'm okay with that, too.
Yeah, I think, I think if you can just submit to Chief of Staff and to me what you're looking for, and we'll involve Chief Navarro, because I believe the police is involved with the-
Yep.
-the towing allocation for, and I can't remember if we do a zoned, if we do zones here, if we just have one.
Zoned right now.
Okay.
Okay.
It's divided in three right now.
Okay. Sounds good.
So we can look at either rezoning it, or different ways that it can be done. And the other thing we have to consider is, does each one have the right equipment to do the towing? You know, I mean, some don't, but we'll look at all that.
Okay.
If you submit it, we'll look into it.
I would like to be in those conversations because of the amounts that these people are towing, and basically forcing people to pay on the times that they're not open. So if you're going to charge, you're going to open. So let's say Saturday, they tow your car, two o'clock in the morning, whatever, it's a hundred and fifty dollars, then sixty dollars per day. If they want to charge for Sunday, they're going to be open Sunday, or else they can't charge for Sunday.
Yeah. Well, then I'll add, I'll add, send an email so we can all meet, and do want to say, part of this is, is, you know, we're going to draft something, and if they don't agree, you know, we're, we're open to getting other people. Thank you, that's it for me.
Alderman Turner?
Thank you. So just, just, I didn't quite hear the discussion around this allegation about Mr. Die, so that's going to be taken offline?
Yeah, what, what I recommend with is that, that Alderman Guzman submits something in writing to the mayor, if he wants to share that with the council, that's fine. This will likely end up something that you'll discuss in, probably in closed session.
Great, thank you. All right. Excuse me. To the Stallworths, again, you guys know you have my condolences heartfelt, and I would ask, ask that immediately tonight, that a memo be put out to the fire stations, the ambulances that they start adhering to Act 1251. If we can get, I mean, it's just four fire stations, I don't know how many ambulances are running, but we need to take immediate action on that. And I've noticed it too. I, I was, this is the first I heard of, I never, I was never aware of this act, but, you know, they go by, down Glen Flora by my house all the time, right? And I'm like, man, who has, so yeah, if we can take action for that, I, I appreciate, I'm sure his family would too. Excuse me. Oh, wow. Maybe a year, year and a half ago, I asked about a culture and morale study. Never got that done, but I understand that there's something called a 360 assessment. I think that's similar to a culture and morale study. And I was curious about the status of that, and if that's going to be released to the council, if that's not, if it can be released to the council.
Does 360 personnel, personnel issues cannot be, they're confidential?
But it's confidential, right? It's all anonymous, so you ask the guy, hey, what do you think? And he's, there's no names there.
I'll put my name.
Pardon me?
Not sure it's not anonymous.
Not? Okay. So we can't know what the troops are thinking? I mean, I know what the people think. Again, lack of transparency. With the road program, this just occurred to me in no slight to anyone, but I just want to draw attention to the status of Alderman Felix, the status of the roads around City Hall, West Street, MLK, and, you know, the one, zero hundred block and the one hundred block, all, all the way up to Julian County. All of them need significant repair, if not resurfacing, significant patching. So hopefully that's included in the 2025 Road Program. Number, that was number three. Number four, oh man. So last week, I received a call from a commercial property owner, owns numerous, numerous prop, commercial properties, one of which is a, was a car repair shop, that his client, his, his tenant was a car repair shop over on Belvedere. And as, as this gentleman, you know, conveyed to me, he received a call from his tenant, hey man, last, straw that broke the camel's back, I'm tired of this city, city's picking on me, giving me a hard time, and he broke his lease because the car, is a auto, car body repair shop, right? And he was given a notice or a citation because the cars parked on his parking lot were oriented north to south as opposed to east to west. And so the gentleman broke his lease, and within a week, he had moved over to Gurnee and opened up shop in Gurnee. And this, I mean, the place is now is empty, another empty building down on Belvedere. And we're chasing businesses out of town with this nonsensical nuisance ridiculousness, and it is, it really needs to stop. I've hear from numerous business owners, developers, investors, how difficult it is to do business in the city, and then we had Bill Powers come up here and talk about the project at 10 North Sherrod, and I've, I've spoken about that project in the past. We lost an opportunity, he was going to put seventeen million to renovate that entire building from the basement to the rafters to the, to the rooftop, and he couldn't get a deal. He couldn't get a deal for parking while he was doing the renovation. He wasn't, he didn't want permanent parking, right? Couldn't get that done. Pays nine hundred and thirty- Pays $934,000 in taxes. Mayor, you mentioned over 400 voicemails that had not been answered. I just, and I know, I know that happens with regularity. That's, and it's a cultural thing. But how do you run a $268 million corporation, you have 400 voicemails that go unanswered? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, and, and thank you for that clarification. I misunderstood, and I thought it was current. Nonetheless, nonetheless, there is a perception amongst the public, broad perception, that there's a dearth of communications via telephonic or emails. Emails are not being returned, telephone calls are not being answered, voicemails are not being answered, your voicemails are full, same thing. But I do appreciate that this 400 wasn't under your watch, and that's a great thing. But still, we have a long way to go to improve our communications, both internally amongst departments and externally to our residents and businesses. I have another one here. The lawyer. And I know you had some questions about this, Mayor, and I think Alderman Florian did too about the cost. We have not created a scope of work or proposal or anything that, so we don't, we don't know what all that's going to encompass. I think, and we haven't all talked about this at one time, right, obviously, but kind of the thought is that, as Alderman Guzman mentioned, we would craft a, a proposal or request for proposal and float it over to the Lake County Bar, right, and, and take it from there. I don't anticipate a significant cost. We, we spend, the department heads, and correct me again if I'm wrong, can spend up to $25,000 without council approval. And I, I would anticipate something similar. I don't anticipate matching L. Rod Freeman at 250 or some, any, it's going to be really hundreds of hundreds or minimum thousands of dollars. So there's that. And then finally, to the public, it's going, it's, yeah, it's been cold, but we are getting ready to get hit with like super cold. They're talking minus 30 below, and I'm, I'm just, please be cautious. This kind of cold is no joke. You can get frostbite in as little as 10 minutes with your skin exposed. That means your face, your cheeks, your ears, your fingers, please cover up. And, and again, as was previously mentioned, you know, take care of your pets too. And if you become aware of someone who is being neglectful, it doesn't hurt to make a call. It doesn't hurt to knock on the door.
The law, and I know the fire department will, you know, renew their information to their EMTs and of course rescue squad drivers and stuff. But again, thank you for coming in, and I do appreciate it. And while I'm up here, also, my condolences to the Kirkwood family, losing a son too. It's, it's crazy the way this world, this world goes, but you, like I said, you got to be careful, and if you can, keep your head down. Also, as I do all the time, I thank the staff from the top, from the top people all the way down to the guys working in the street. You did a fantastic job with, with the snowfall. I made a couple of calls. Everything was taken care of, and Alonzo looked great on TV, and he, he did a great job. I want to thank him for that too. And then every, everybody, keep your eyes open, keep, keep your head down. If you see something, you know, report it, and if not, you know, hopefully you're fine. Thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to clarify something I said last meeting about the pit count, the point in time count. We did not find 500 people last year. We found 170. There's 500 people in shelter most nights currently in Lake County. I'm talking about the homeless count we do once a year, so I just wanted to clarify that. The numbers are still not out for this year's count, but I will share them when I, I get those numbers in the next month or so. Secondly, I want to remind everyone, I'm having a ward meeting on March 6th at 6:30 at McCall School. The director of pads will be there to discuss the shelter that's going to be opening in the eighth ward, and the director or someone else from Habitat for Humanity will be there to talk about the Habitat House that's being built in the eighth ward. And we'll also discuss any other types of questions or whatever that come up. I, I'm curious to see what the cost to benefit ratio is going to be for the attorney, Alderman Guzman, since you're so concerned about the cost to benefit ratio. I don't, I don't see that happening really, but I, I look forward to you explaining to me how spending more tax dollars on more attorneys is going to benefit the community. So we'll see. And I don't know where you're going to find someone that's going to work for less than $25,000 either, but we'll talk, we can talk about that too. I want to express my condolences to the Stallworth family and to say I look forward to the police, or the firemen, ambulance drivers following the, the law. We, we had that law actually in Waukegan even before it was passed at the state level. And I think we just need to remind the drivers how important it is for them to follow that law. And I would also like to express my condolences to the Kirkwood family on the tragedy that happened in their family. Thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Pass.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, Stallworth family, thank you for sharing in the update regarding the law. And I think attorney, it would be a great suggestion that you made in working with our fire department. And I was there, as you know, I signed off on the street name change, and it is important that they have the sirens on, because I too almost have gotten almost hit a couple times personally. And then I want to say thank you to all our staff for your hard work and just going above and beyond. And I really want to give a shout out to Daphne Hannah Brooks for going above and beyond. I want to say thank you personally. And then don't forget to support your museum, English Manor History Museum in celebration of Black history. And then Mayor, thank you for giving clarification to my previous statement. And then updating the first ward, you know, we redoing, we're doing the lead piping project, and right now we're on Lenox and Martin Luther King. And also, I know there was comments and concerns in reference to McAllister and it being repaved. So that project is being addressed, and this is all I have. Stay warm and safe. God bless.
Okay. I will add a couple of quick announcements. One, again, I want to thank the Stallworth family for being here this evening. I know we do extensive training, but you know what? Having you here as a face to represent that this is what happened reminds us every day because things do happen. We do forget, and thank you for that reminder and having the courage to come here. So thank you. You're welcome. Make them enforce it. Second of all, I want to announce, you know, I want to offer my condolences to the Kirkwood family. The funeral is this Saturday in Rockford. The wake is at nine o'clock. The funeral starts at 10:00. I want to add a little bit, something to the pet ordinances that we were talking about. Yes, there, our ordinance says there are three dogs or cats that are allowed or mix in the city. You can petition the, at that time, it was the chief of police. It will now go to animal control because they're, they're separate for a reason that you would have a fourth animal. We do have people who have rescues that can have multiple animals, and it does not comply to the ordinance, but it has to be approved through animal control. Now, it used to be the police department. The police department didn't always know they had that responsibility. I found out about it in the ordinances in 2013, and I'm saying this because some of you may run into this. I was told myself, because I lived on an acre, I was told by a Lake County deputy that I could have four pets if you lived on an acre or more. That is not true. If you are in the city of Waukegan, you have, you can have three. But when I looked up the ordinance, it said you could go to the police chief. Well, now that we don't have that under the police chief or the police department, I'm going to say, don't bother Chief Navarro, go directly to animal control. And there is a way that you can have them, but they have to be in compliance, and they have to have all their shots, and they will give you all the information on that.
Can I have three dogs and a chicken?
Is what?
Can I have a chicken?
No. You can't have chickens. That you cannot have.
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who's first and who's second?
Alderman Turner, second was Alderman Martinez.